Hallel, Father, we just thank you for this day. We thank you for the opportunity to be together and to care for our county and to unify around our county. We pray for wisdom and guidance. We pray for these first responders and all our staff that work so hard every day to give back to the citizens of Paulding County. Just be with us as we make decisions in Christ's name, amen. So we, Labor Day ends the summer and kicks off football, something to celebrate. The, well, let me ask Brian to come forward first. If you have any devices active, you might shut those down. I hope mine is. Thanks, sir. The August 14th, 2018 work session minutes, the August 14th, 2018 board meeting minutes, and the August 14th, 2018 public hearing minutes are available for review. Under our positivity pausing section this morning, we want to feature our Paulding County Animal Control, and this is called Great News from the Paulding County Animal Control. Eileen or Frank or anyone want to speak on that afterwards or take any questions, that'd be awesome.
Hey, this is Eileen Culberson, Facility Manager here at Paulding County Animal Control, and I'm here to talk about three very exciting things we have going on here. First, we have our TNVR program, Trap, Neuter, Vaccinate, Release. We also had purchased a new van, very excited about that animal control van, and our Clear the Shelter event that happened this weekend.
This is Katie from Paulding County Animal Control, wanted to talk to you about our TNVR program, Trap, Neuter, Vaccinate, and Release. We have spay neutered, vaccinated, and released about 60 cats so far since May. We are looking for donations to go to West Georgia Spay-Neuter Clinic for our matching program that we have there. Every donation will go to a matching grant that Fix It Pets is helping us with. We are also looking for barn homes for safe, suitable areas that the cats that have been picked up may not be able to go back into the environments that they came from. If you have any questions or you do have a barn that may be able to help, please call
Our new animal control van that just came onboard, we did order it in our 2017 budget. It was floss money. Great thing about this van is the central heat and air. Animals are put in the back of the van. They do have access to air conditioning in the summer and heat in the wintertime and outside lights that are working all the way around the van. So anytime we're outside trying to do something, we can see what's going on outside the van Clear the Shelter is a nationwide event. Hills Science Stites started this several years ago, and we came onboard last year. We did approximately 40, 45 animals, I think. We started this event Friday, the 17th, at 12 o'clock, ended it last night at 5:00 p.m. 67 animals, 67 animals left the shelter, all got new homes. We are very, very excited about this. We really, really need to thank the volunteers that came in Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, and my staff. I just really, really, really could not have done this without these staff and the adopters. Thank you. Thank you, everyone that came in and adopted this weekend. We truly appreciate you.
Eileen or Frank, have you anything else to say about animal control this morning? Your option. Any questions from any of the audience?
I appreciate it.
Morning.
They're doing a great job out there. Trevor, appreciate all your help. In fact, I went out there during the event, and Trevor was actually in the cat room. My wife was with us, and I had to tell her we can't take any of the cats home. But Trevor was out there and the staff was out there. Eileen did a great job with her staff, and it was just a great event. And the numbers on the new program are just incredible, and I had already talked with Eileen about coming back in September to give you all an update. So, you know, we've just been doing this since, I guess, the end of May, 1st of June, so the number's already incredible. So we're hoping to come back, if you're willing to hear from us, back in September, or in September to hear a little bit more about specifics of that program. So we're real excited about it, but they're just doing a tremendous job out there, and I appreciate everything they're doing.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keeping with the animal theme, the Board of Commissioners would like to recognize Deputy Roy Key and new K-9 Rex for the completion of the Paulding County Sheriff's Office K-9 Training Program. And Lieutenant Billy Hurst is going to come up along with Mr. Key and Rex and tell us a little bit about their program, and you can see our new K-9 deputy.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Mr. Chairman and one of the members of the board, thank you very much for the opportunity. So for the past, I guess, seven or so years, we've been operating with just three K-9 teams, myself and my partner, K-9 Major. In the back of the room is Deputy First Class Brandon Kilgore, his partner, K-9 Vero, as well as Deputy First Class Ricky Waters and his partner, K-9 Bickel. Well, this past April, Deputy Key tried out four and was selected among his peers to become the newest member of the Sheriff's Office K-9 Division. He reported to Shallow Creek Kennels in Pennsylvania this past June for a six-week handler school and graduated just a few weeks ago. While he was up there at Shallow Creek Kennels, he was partnered up with K-9 Rex who you see before you. They were partnered up, teamed together, they bonded for a week or so, and then started their very rigorous six-week training program that consisted of drug detection, suspect tracking, criminal apprehension, building searches, and area searches. They certified as a team together through the North American Police Work Dog Association. So that's something that we at the Sheriff's Office, because Sheriff Gullidge holds us in such high standards, it's not a requirement through the state of Georgia to hold a certification, but we do, and certainly very proud of that. You know, we certainly hope that this new K-9 team has a very long and very successful career protecting and serving the citizens of Paulding County, and just want to thank you again for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary told me that if you stand up and hold your arm out like that, he'll show you how Rex will jump the wall.
Hey, Dave, they all taste like cheese.
I hope you practice that.
He's ready to play now.
He's got something to do now, though.
That's a toy.
Yeah.
after 17 years of service with the Paulding County Parks and Recreation Department. Mr. Justice is going to tell us a little bit more about this career.
Come here, Patricia. If you would, just walk right up there in front of the chairman. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. There's not many times in the 17-plus years that Patricia's been here that I've told her anything to do, so I'm not going to tell her today, but I'm going to ask her, please don't be mad at me, and please don't hurt me when we finish. About 18 years ago or so, we decided that we needed some color in our parks, not just our regular old plant life and stuff, but we needed some color, some vibrancy there. And we got into the greenhouse business a little bit, decided we'd save the county some money instead of buying plants that I would kill, that we would try to find somebody that knew a whole lot more than we did about it. Fortunately, at that time, we found Patricia. I'm going to read through this because I'll forget some things and mess it up, so bear with me. Like I said, I had no idea, you know, what I was doing or what we had gotten into, so the success of that program is directly attributed to Patricia and her efforts. Since that time, she has produced a majority, if not all, of our perennial and annual color that you see out there in the parks. I'm not talking about like I was doing and going to the local nursery and buying it and putting it in the ground. She's growing this stuff from seed, she's growing it from clippings from the previous seasons. She doesn't have just green thumbs, she's got green hands and arms, and she just works wonders with that, and we're thankful for her. She's done all that without direction or input, you know, from any of us, myself included. As a matter of fact, most of the direction that comes from that is her telling me what I need to do, you know, to help her get this stuff done so that she can make our parks a little bit brighter for the folks that come in there. 17-plus years working on 18, we've been blessed to have her there. We're grateful, Patricia, for your efforts, and wish you nothing but the best as you enter your retirement. Thank you so much for what you've done for us and for the county.
As everybody's getting set, I'd just like to read as everybody's coming up. Come on up, Parson Rex. Presented to Pat Rudisil in grateful appreciation for over 17 years of dedicated service to Paulding County Government by the Paulding County Board of Commissioners, August 31st, 2018. Thank you. I think Michael's going to take you all out to lunch.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Michael. We have no invited guests today, no bid awards, reports from committees and departments, we have none. No one has signed up from the public to speak on agenda items. We have three consent agenda items. Number one is appoint a Hiram Police Chief Jamison Sailors to the Paulding County Department of Family and Children's Services Board for a five-year term ending December 31st, 2022. Number two is authorize the chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding with the City of Dallas regarding inspection and issuance of certificates of occupancy for the adult detention center in the sheriff's office. And number three is to appoint Dan Nolan to the Industrial Billing Authority with a term ending December 31st, 2021. Would any of the commissioners like to move any of these items to the regular business? We'll move on to old business, where we have none there also, and under new business.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before we continue on with new business, I would like to ask the commissioners, I'd like to add one thing of new business to discuss for new business number four, and that is to like to take just a few minutes and discuss IBA and Airport Authority bonds, and I've got just a little information I'd like to share with the commissioners, and I'd like to do that at the end. So my motion is to add the discussion of IBA and Airport Authority bonds to be number four on new business.
We have a second to add that.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to discuss IBA and Airport Authority bonds in a second. We do have a motion and a second, so under discussion, I would just read the Paulding County Code, which talks about in the event of an emergency or urgent necessity, the agenda may be amended or altered after the proposed work session agenda or before the work session agenda or during the work session agenda. So I just wish that we could get this on here so that it, another advantage of having it on the agenda is it gives the citizens the opportunity to respond, to read what the discussion's going to be on. Maybe they want to make some comments and get on the sign-up sheet for agenda items. We have a motion and a second.
To work sessions so that we can build the agenda, and that's what I'm doing, and some things have come up that I feel like it's necessary to inform the public on, and this is where we need to do that business. So thank you all.
And I certainly don't mind having it on there, and I would just appreciate a heads up, and again, allow the citizens the opportunity to speak up on it also. So we have a motion and a second. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Under new business number one is discuss action to adopt Resolution 18-43A, Resolution updating and authorizing 911 charges on telephone services and wireless enhanced 911 charges other than prepaid wireless services, approving an effective date, repealing prior resolution in conflict and for other purposes. And we have Mr. David Mumford to elaborate.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The first two agenda items are related to the legislation that was passed this last legislative session, and it was basically, it rewrote and revamped the 911 laws in Georgia, and it created a Georgia 911 authority that's mainly managed by local government. As most of you are aware, this is a bill that we worked on for years, back when I was president of the Georgia Emergency Number Association. We partnered up with the ACCG and Georgia APCO 911 Director Association and our industry partners to craft this bill. And what these two resolutions do is repeals the previous resolutions that we have currently in effect for collection of 911 fees. Up until this point, or until January 1st of 2019, 911 fees were remitted directly to the local authorities, whether it be a municipality or a county government that ran the 911 centers. With the new law that has taken effect, the Department of Revenue will be collecting these fees, and they're going to be sending them back to the local governments. In the past, this was one of the, it's one thing that we bargained with, with the service providers to get some stuff in return. They had to write 160-some-odd checks every month to these different entities throughout the state of Georgia. Georgia was one of the few states left that still had 911 fees submitted directly to the counties. Most of them are collected at a state level, and so this allows them to make one payment to the state, and the state then reimburses it back to the county. It gets reimbursed the same way that we do now based on population, that actually, your home phone and your contract wireless service gets sent back to the county based on where you live, so it's your service address, just like it is now. The only difference is prepaid wireless, and when we implemented that, which is the second agenda item several years ago, the state sends that out based on the population of your county. The other thing that these resolutions do, and if I can go ahead and speak to the second one at the same time, the prepaid resolution, or the law actually, General Assembly increased the amount of 911 fees on prepaid cell phones to $1.50. They were 75 cents. That brought them in line in parity with all the other 911 devices, and when prepaid was first entered into the market, it was 75 cents per transaction, and so you would do like a 30-minute card, and then two weeks later, you might have to add another 30 minutes, so they made it 75 cents to try and make it equal. Well, now, every prepaid service out there offers a, basically a 30-day or a one-month unlimited service, and so the 911 centers were seeing a decrease in revenue, and now we're providing the same level of service to these prepaid phones as we were the contract phones, and so this brought them up in parity with every other device that can connect to the 911 system. Along with this, and for us to get these concessions, we also, we no longer have to pay cost recovery back to the, back to the providers. So for years in Georgia, we, AT&amp;T would collect the money, they would send it to us, we would turn around and send them a percentage of it back for them to actually provide 911 service, and we no longer have to pay that fee. So the county will see an increase in prepaid funds and will see a decrease of several hundred thousand dollars that we don't have to, we no longer have to pay back to the providers. And that's the gist of what the two resolutions accomplish and what the law that was passed did for the 911 as a whole, so. We'll be happy to answer any questions, so.
As the board's thinking of questions, let me read number two, which you also, as you said, discussed or presented. Number two is discuss action to adopt Resolution 18-44A, Resolution updating and authorizing 911 charges on prepaid wireless services, providing an effective date, repealing prior resolution in conflict and for other purposes. So we just need to get that on the record.
Both of those resolutions, we have two resolutions that currently cover this, and this repeals those as of January 1, and the new resolutions take over, along with the state collecting our fees and remitting them back to us. It's a good thing. We worked, we worked years on this legislation, so.
Going to help the budget?
It will, yes. And as a matter of fact, hopefully it will keep us from having to take any money from the general fund again, bring us back to where we're self-sufficient, so.
Could you repeat that? I'm kidding.
Hopefully, I can guarantee anything, but we should see, our prepaid wireless fees should increase by 50%. We should see that increase by 50%, and then we're not, our, the amount that we pay out to our providers was in the neighborhood of $300,000 to $400,000 a year, so we'll no longer have to pay that. So we'll, you know, we'll see a significant increase.
You've been working on this for two or three years?
About six years, so. When we first started.
For those in the room that do not know you, I know you lead regionally and even around the nation from time to time in order to work together to see what changes need to be made in the 911s system, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dave, I personally want to thank you for staying on the cutting edge.
Not the bleeding edge, but the cutting edge.
Cutting edge.
We try to be on the cutting edge, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you very much.
New business number three is discuss action on charges to the Paulding County Zoning Ordinance's Planned Residential Development Zoning District and action to adopt Resolution 18-45, ending the acceptance of new applications to the Planned Residential Development PRD zoning district, and directing staff to create new residential districts for inclusion in the Paulding County zoning ordinance. Ms. Lippman.
Morning, Commissioners, Ms. Skipper.
Good morning.
This agenda item is to address the extended moratorium on PRD rezonings that was done at the June 26 meeting, and as the title reads, "Staff has recommended Board of Commissioners to allow the PRD moratorium to expire but to no longer accept any applications for PRD and to consider any conforming property to be vested." I liken this to if you've ever been to Ben &amp; Jerry's factory in Vermont, they have what's called a flavor graveyard, and all the flavors of ice cream they no longer make, they memorialize them in a field by their factory, and we are proposing to put PRD in the Paulding County zoning ordinance graveyard, so RIP PRD. In addition to doing that, as the resolution states, myself and my staff are looking at some other changes to make to the zoning ordinance. It actually, doing this is one of the work programs in our comprehensive plan from 2017, which was to create clear and user-friendly zoning ordinance and development regulations for character areas consistent with the 2017 comprehensive plan land use recommendations. So we are already working on creating some new districts. R-55 was one of the first districts that we created, and I think we have a rezoning to that this afternoon, and we have two more for September. So I think that we succeeded in creating some clear and concise, and those are definitely tied to areas of the comprehensive plan. And I'm also going to be looking at any PRD existing zoning that is 90% or less final platted to see, to check on conformity, especially in the areas if they're in common ownership, or if they have enough acreage. There is a 50-acre minimum, and with the downturn, some of those parcels might have gotten split up, so we would consider those non-conforming, and that's our recommendation. I'll be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have. And there was a flavor called Georgia Peach that was one of the retired flavors in the graveyard, which was kind of sad being from Georgia.
Is it PRD Peach? Any questions?
And when did PRDs come into effect? What year?
The first rezoning was in 1994.
So this is something that needs to be revisited, taken care of, and thank you for your update.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Can you tell us, do you have the information, when was it that they lowered the lot size on them?
I believe that was 2004.
Okay, that's what I, I thought it was 3, 4, 5.
Yeah, there was two amendments made, I believe, one was in 2004 and another in I actually think 2004 was when townhouses were removed, and 2007 was when the lot size was lowered. Does that sound right, Chris?
Yeah, it was earlier than that.
I can assure you.
Might be interesting for the audience to know or be aware of how much the county has already zoned PRD, roughly.
I think there was 101 zonings. I believe the total lot was a little over 30,000 lots. Now, I know, I don't have the acreage off the top of my head, but I know it was the size of Dallas, Braswell, and Hiram times two, so it was the same size of the three cities twice.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for bringing.
Thanks for getting it done.
Yes, thank you.
And new business number four, which is the add-on by Commissioner Powell, is regarding the IBA and Paulding County Airport Authority bonds.
I wanted to talk a couple minutes. The video, I've got a video I want to show that's going to take a little bit of time. There's been a lot of discussion over the years concerning IBA bonds and Airport Authority bonds. This video here is concerning IBA bonds, and it was in the meeting of March 22nd, 2011. And that was the meeting where we voted on the film studio, we voted on the hangar, airport hangar, and the water tower, a total of...
We're going to get someone from IT, it's blocked out, but they'll fix it for us.
Okay. Okay. You might be able to scroll down to, on the left as you're looking at it, you might be able to find it on the side, on down.
It's not letting it, okay.
Generally, they don't allow outside flash drives or discs to be put into computers here.
So, anyway, it'll be a few minutes before they get here, but I think it's important for us to see this for today, tomorrow, and in the future. And it's concerning, like I said, it's concerning those three bonds issues, which they were $1.2 million and $7.2 million. And there's been a lot of discussion over, really a lot of discussion since then, over who's going to be paying for the bonds, who's responsible for paying for the bonds, and what's going to happen with the funds, the proceeds, when those assets that those bonds are backing, such as like your home and your mortgage that's backing your, for your home, if those assets are sold, and what's going to happen with the money. I have asked, I went to the IBA and talked to several people at the IBA, on the IBA Board, I've talked to the chairman. We are supposed to have a sit-down meeting sometime next month, but I've been asking for it for one year and seven months. And so before I leave office, I want you to know what happened at that meeting, I want you to know what I believe should happen, and then it can go from there. That project was vetted by the IBA, their board, their director at the time. That project was voted on by the Board of Commissioners, of which the only one still sitting up here at this moment is myself. And we voted to back the bonds for those three projects. It was a 3-2 vote. Myself and Commissioner David Barnett voted against the bonds. The other three voted for the bonds. There's been some discussion, there's been some discussion the last six or eight months concerning selling an asset, the film studio, and what they would do or not do with those And the discussion started off being, they planned on keeping those proceeds and not paying back the county, which is not paying back the citizens. I sit here in this seat, and I have sat here in this seat, and I'm responsible to the Mr. Chairman, you sit here, and number one, you're first responsible to the taxpayers, and number two, because of your seat here, you sit on the IBA and Airport Authority. We've talked about institutional knowledge over the past few years. Mr. Baker and I have talked about it. And institutional knowledge is people that's been here, department heads that have been here, that know what's happened in the past. And some people don't like to talk about the past, and what we call history, but I feel like if you don't look at what the past was in history, and see where you're at today, and look where you made mistakes in the past, it's hard to get a good handle on the direction in the future. In my view, do we have somebody coming to, okay. In my view, and you'll see the video, hopefully, in a minute. The IBA wanted those bonds for those three projects. They come before the Board of Commissioners to ask for that, and we have to ultimately, if we vote on that, we back it with the taxpayers. Whether we pay those bonds because they don't pay them, if they make a commitment to paying them, and we have to come back and pay them, then that's something that we have to do, whether we do that out of fund balance, the savings account, or whether we have to raise the mill a little bit in order to fund that. That's the responsibility that we have. All of those bonds, the airport, the IBA with the airport hangar, the film studio, and the water tower, were IBA projects. All of those bonds were committed to be paid for by the IBA. From those projects, which should have produced income, the hangar and the film studio, naturally the water tower doesn't really, you know, support bringing in income, but it supports other things out there in the future, hopefully, that would bring in income. So far, the water tower hasn't done anything, it's just there with water in it. When the IBA or the Airport Authority come to the Board of Commissioners and ask for our support, they're doing it because that's really how they get money. And if they were to go out and try to do it on their own, they're not going to get the same interest rate that we get, because we've got, the county has a great credit rating. And at the end of the day, if those bond payments are not made, we're going to go to the taxpayers and say, hey, we got to have the money in order to do it. Whether, again, whether we take it from fund balance, or we have to go and raise the mill rate, those bonds have been being paid out of the debt service that we have. If those authorities are going to ask for money and ask for us to support them, whether it's this board today, or a future board in a few months, number one, they need to, they need to keep their commitment. If they're not going to keep that commitment, they need to come to us, and they need to talk about it. There's only, only so many places that we can do that. One, we can do it in a meeting, whether it's their meeting, that a couple of us could go to, or they were to come here and explain what they wanted to do. And that hasn't been done. But as somebody that's responsible to the citizens, I can't continue to just sit there and ask for meetings to happen, and it not happen, and us not take care of what needs to be taken care of. It comes up different on my computer. Try to, try to go with the first one there. It comes up different on my screen. I think if you pull up the first one, I think it'll open up the screen, and it'll allow you to go to a work session, or the board meeting.
Paulding County firefighter, and a member of the 170...
We'll be about halfway. There you go. Keep going.
For up to 1,005 miles. That will cover our entire paved and un...
And then, Tommy can fully appreciate it.
Walker County.
When we told, when we...
We're certainly, we're certainly, versus, how much should we reasonably expect our taxpayers to bear the cost of? And it was a delicate balance, but I think we're there. We're certainly a half a million dollars better off financially this year with, with this health care plan than we were 12 months ago.
And I'll say to Jay Smith-LeNeer's credit...
This is going to take a few minutes.
When we told them what we needed to do, they showed us how to get there. Now, again, I mean, they, you know, they did what we asked them to do. And, and you're right, Gary, and I had to argue some. In fact, he had to hand off to David, so we wouldn't, you know, start yelling at each other. But we, he guided us what we needed. He guided us where we needed to be.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Number eight, discuss action to adopt Resolution 11-07, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Paulding County, Georgia, to approve the bond resolution for the Paulding County Industrial Building Authority authorizing the issuance of the Paulding County Industrial Building Authority Revenue Bonds, Paulding County Economic Development Projects, Series 2011A, in the principal amount not to exceed $1,200,000. And the Paulding County Industrial Building Authority taxable revenue bonds, Paulding County Economic Development Projects, Series 2011B, to authorize the execution of a contract between the county and the authority to authorize the chairman and other officers and officials of the county to take further actions as are necessary to provide the issuance and delivery of revenue bonds described herein, and for other purposes.
Mr. Chairman, if we could just make one change to the way this reads, I think it's important that, where it says Series 2011B, that we insert and say an amount not to exceed 7.2 million, for clarity, so that we know exactly what we're talking about here, that was just inadvertently left out. So Series A should be 1.2 million, and Series B should be 7.2 million.
Morning.
Morning.
I will give you a little bit of background on each one of these, but before I do that, I'd like to introduce Jim Woodward. He is the legal counsel for the bond issuance. He's with Miller Mart...
Miller Mart, that's right.
Make sure I got that name right. Always got to get that plug in there. And Jim would be glad to answer any questions on the technicalities of the bond and the resolution. But as far as the background of the projects, the Series A bond, which is the bond not to exceed 1.2 million, is a bond to construct a water tank located at or near the airport. This project has been developed out of the need to provide sufficient fire flow, not only for the airport, but also for the airport technology park. I think all of you are aware, we have hired Arcatis to design the airport technology park, and I say we, I mean the Paulding County Industrial Building Authority, has hired Arcatis to do that work, and they are the group that has evaluated the need for the water tank. Wasn't, wasn't a surprise to us, we knew that we were going to need a water tank out there at some point in time, and in order to continue construction on the airport with the corporate hangars, and start construction on the airport technology park, the water tank is needed to provide the fire flow required for those facilities. The Series B bond includes funds for a hangar at the airport and a film studio project. The hangar project is a joint venture between the Paulding County Airport Authority, the Paulding County Industrial Building Authority, and the Paulding Jet Center, which is our FBO at the airport. The purpose of this is to provide a facility for the Paulding Jet Center to bring businesses to the Paulding County Airport. We do have two businesses that are currently interested in locating there, and obviously they need facilities in order to do that. So this would facilitate the recruitment of those two businesses to the Paulding County Airport, but also provide a place for larger hangar storage. I think all of you have been out there and have seen the hangars that have been built, what we call the T-hangers, which accommodate the smaller, personal-owned airplanes, but they will not accommodate the larger, corporate-style airplanes. So in order to recruit those aircraft to our airport, and be able to sell larger amounts of gas, and collect larger amounts of added lower tax, we've got to have facilities available to park those planes in. So this provides for that. The second part of the Series B, the film studio, is a project that we've been working on in the county for, I guess, about 12 months now. We're working with a, a group out of California, Roadtown, to provide a location in Paulding County for the filming of feature films. I think everyone now has seen in the newspapers, and probably has heard at different chamber events, about the films that have been filmed in Paulding County over the last 12 months. And all of those, for the most part, are due to the state's incentives that they have put into place. Georgia has become one of the premier states in the country for filming not only movies, but TV, and commercial ads as well, due to the state's incentives. It's a growing industry, the incentives have only been in place for a couple of years. There are only just a few facilities available in the state. So we're, we're getting on board with this very, very early, so that we can take advantage of the incentives the state has put in place, and the fact that there are really very limited facilities in the state for these films and TV shows. If anybody's got any specific questions on the projects, I'll be glad to address that. And as I mentioned, Mr. Woodward is here to address issues with the bond resolution and the legalities of those.
Can I make, about the film studio, that, I mean, of course, that's a big word, and none of us really under, are, well, say we don't understand it, but ultimately, it's buildings that, you know, that they're going to use, but they could also be used for any industry that may choose to move here. If after five years, 10 years, something goes away with that, we still own buildings that are worth what we put in them, and we can bring other industries to them, correct?
That is correct, and as a matter of fact, we have been able to take advantage of an unfortunate downturn in the economy, with an existing building and some existing developed property that unfortunately ended up back, back with the banks. Common issue throughout the entire country. We've been able to take advantage of that, and we're going to be acquiring an existing building and some property that, that has been developed, and we're frankly acquiring it at a very, very discounted price. So we are going to be building a, a new building, which will be about 60,000 square-foot building, to go along with the existing 30,000 square-foot building that, that is there at the property. But the new building and the existing building could be used for, for many, many different usages in the future. A film studio is really kind of a, for lack of a better term, a fancy warehouse. It has some lighting capabilities, and some insulation, and some soundproofing that you wouldn't normally find in, in a warehouse, but the facility can easily be converted to manufacturing, industrial, distribution, a whole host of other uses. So we feel very, very good about the project in that... But the facility can easily be converted to manufacturing, industrial, distribution, a whole host of other uses. So we feel very, very good about the project in that, as I mentioned earlier, there are very good state incentives available. And we know from our personal experience here in Pauling County that movies are being shot here. So we still feel very good about the business prospect. But it's good to have kind of a backup plan, so to speak. And with these facilities, they will be in a prime location in our county. And I don't see any problems whatsoever with converting them to another use in the future in the event that the studio industry dries up for whatever reason.
This is something I've been working on for approximately a year. And, you know, the public, there's still people out there that don't like the airport. It's here. It's built. It's $50 million. The federal government put in it. And we're going to make it be successful. And to be successful, we have to construct the water tower that will help us with Joey and his crew be able to fight a fire if needed. The second part of that is the Pauling Jet Center, which we knew coming in, there were some great opportunities. There's a gentleman that owns a company in Tennessee that would like to move that company here. And with the banks not loaning money, we do, are a very cash-rich company that could make the monthly payment come in and be able to, within the next 36 months, take that burden off of us. And the last is the referred to as the film studio, but more than this is an investment in a project that unfortunately developers lost. And frankly, I don't think we'd be able to move forward with this had we not been able to pick this up at a bargain and then be able to, at this time, construct a building at much lower costs than we ever had in the past. Now, you could sit and do absolutely nothing and wait for stuff to come, or you can get your county ready. The first part of that was yesterday when we attended a 70-county attendance at the Capitol to receive camera-ready status. It's something the chambers worked on very hard for us. It's the beginning of the film industry for us. And it was a good day to get started. So, you know, it, for me, it is projects that I've worked on for about a year, as you know, to form the Economic Development Group and to get an economic director in here that could help us sell our county. Some people say, well, why don't you do that as a salesman, which I am? And my background doesn't, hasn't taught me where to find those people throughout the world. But what my background has is the moment they're turned over to me, I can sell a fire out of this county. So I just want you to know that it takes that person. It takes us all getting on board. And certainly, it's a time in hard economic times, I think, to lead us out of this recession. And I'm willing to put that burden on my shoulders. So I just want to make a public statement that it is something I am working towards for the future of Pauling County.
One thing about the bonds, to make sure I understand, I mean, the IBA is selling these bonds. Pauling County is strictly backing the bonds and saying, in case the IBA's project doesn't go, we would pay the bond. So we're not, in other words, we're not agreeing to pay for the bonds. The county's not.
Well, yeah, basically, the revenues from projects can be used to pay for the bonds. But, you know, basically, the Intergovernmental Contract does say that, you know, you'll levy a tax up to 1 mil to pay for the bonds. To exempt the revenues from the projects do not cover, you know, the principal interest payments on the bonds.
Obviously, the Industrial Building Authority has other projects that we're working on. We see the need in the future to do additional bond issuances for both the parks, the Rail Spur Park on Bill Ruth Parkway, as well as the Airport Technology Park itself for the construction of that park. So we have, I don't want to say a mixed bag, but we have a lot of different things going on. And these are just a few of the projects that we have in the works. And some of these projects, such as the water tank, obviously doesn't generate revenue. But the projects that it supports and the growth that it supports will generate revenue. And the Industrial Building Authority, we use all of its revenue proceeds to make sure bond payments are covered.
Okay.
I think Tommy asked a question, and I don't know that I understood your answer.
What's your?
How are we paying for the bonds?
Okay, well, I think he hit on the spot too. But to exempt the revenues, some of the projects do produce revenues, whether it's leased out, film studio, or the hangar space. Any lease revenues coming in from there can be used to pay principal interest on the bonds. But the primary, you know, backup, and this is where we get the credit rating and the low interest rates, is by an Intergovernmental Contract between the Building Authority and the county. We're by the county pledges, you know, it's not as full faith and credit like a general obligation bond, but basically pledges general fund dollars, but also a mil cap of 1 mil on added alarm taxes to pay for it. And so, to the extent revenues aren't available, which, you know, could be the case, tax dollars, you know, will be used to pay for the bonds.
I guess, put in English.
Yeah, oh, sorry, yeah, yeah.
I mean, Blake and them have done their studies, and financially, these two projects will pay for the bonds, okay? But because Blake is not creditworthy, the county is going to say, okay, we'll co-sign those bonds with Blake, and Blake's gonna pay them. Now, you know, for some reason, if Blake didn't, then we would have to step in. But Blake has a plan, or the IBA has a plan, to pay them from the revenue of these projects.
I like you saying the IBA has a plan better than Blake has a plan. But, and I'll mention that this is the way all industrial revenue bonds are done. I don't know of any industrial entities that back their own bonds. They're all backed by a county or city or some form of municipality. This is the traditional process for an industrial revenue bond.
Okay. Any more questions?
How are we gonna pay for the bonds while we're getting ready to do the projects that we're doing and they're gonna start producing an income?
It's built into the borrowing amount of the bonds, the amount of proceeds that'll be coming in, is something called capitalized interest. And so basically, it'll be borrowed in the amount of bond proceeds, placed into a separate account held by the, you know, by the paying agent bank. And over, up until, I believe it's August 1st, 2012, that money set aside, which was borrowed, will be used to pay the first interest payments. And so that'll allow enough time for construction of the projects and revenues to start coming in to pay for the bonds. So that's built in. And it's very common for all bonds that finance construction projects to have a capitalized interest component built in. And so that's how, that's gonna be covered.
So outside, other than the water tower, the film industry, Blake and the hangars are gonna bring in the income to support the bonds?
That is correct. And as well as other projects that the Industrial Building Authority already has in the works that aren't bonded projects, that are just projects that we've done with existing capital. But I also want to mention to you that the Industrial Building Authority made sure that we kind of waited till the last minute we possibly could issue these bonds. In other words, we've already done most of the engineering. We've already submitted plans to the county on the hangar. So these projects are ready to go. It's not that we're going to start putting plans together after these bonds are issued. These projects are already ready to go. Leases are already signed for the hangar. As far as ground leases are already signed for the hangar. So we're gonna break ground on these projects very, very quickly. And it's important to us to get them built as quickly as we can so that they do start generating revenue. And we're not just sitting back, taking our time and utilizing those proceeds that Jim mentioned. We'd like to minimize, minimize that construction time so that we minimize the amount of bond that's actually spent on interest carry, I guess you would call it.
Jim, is there any prepayment penalty in that the Pauling Jet Center could take this project and fund it after 36 months? Is there any prepayment penalty in that?
The way the bonds are structured right now, there's an optional call for the bonds, which can be paid off at 10 years, as a standard provision for all bonds. And that's what the market likes to see. And generally gives you your lowest interest rate. And so basically, after 10 years, you will be able to call these in at no prepayment penalty, basically at cost and pay them off. You know, so basically at 10 years, you can bring those in. We discussed doing these out 20 years. Possibly, we have them set up in the initial resolutions, which is this one and the bond resolution adopted by the IBA last Wednesday on the 16th, to go out 30 years. The numbers look better for that. But, you know, first 10 years, you know, they'll be in place. But then anytime after that, you can call them in anytime. And that's something that can be discussed as well. We can build in other prepayments, but that's just the most standard, one that the market commonly sees, and it'll get you your lowest interest rate. And so if you do try to pull it in tighter, say five years, generally, the market's not used to that, and then interest rates will go up for the borrowing.
As far as the, excuse me, as far as the film industry, Tommy might be able to elaborate on this, that we've, a lot of people think, well, we're so far out from Atlanta. But we've received some letters stating that they have acknowledged that what we're doing and we're not too far out. So.
Yeah, ultimately, we contracted with Roadtown to negotiate with the Teamsters and what they call the IOXY union that says we're within the zone, which means that it's like working locally. So we've got favorable approval from the unions that they will support the facilities, which, you know, it's like labor supports what we're doing.
And you have a new airport they're flying to.
I understand the water tower's not gonna produce any money, but it's gonna be there for something for the future. And I understand the hangar. As far as the film industry, you feel confident that that, that five or six million dollars, that that's gonna generate the income that we're gonna need, that you guys are gonna need, the IBA's gonna need?
Right. The performas that we have that have been created by Roadtown are based on work that they've done, not in California, because what they've done in California wouldn't be comparable to what we're doing here. But work that they've done in other states such as Arizona, Mississippi, and Georgia as well. So they've used the existing market and the existing industry to create those performas, which indicate to us that the project will make money and that it will be successful. We have also, obviously not just taken their word for it, we have gone to the Georgia Department of Economic Development, which has a film industry division. And we've actually sent Roadtown's performas to the Georgia Department of Economic Development and asked them to take a look at it for us. So they have reviewed those and given us feedback that they, they appear to be consistent with what they see in Georgia, what they see in our market, and that they don't see any issues with their performas. So having that level of expertise from Roadtown, as well as the film industry division of Georgia Department of Economic Development, has given me the level of comfort that I need. Because obviously, I'm not in the film industry. So we needed to go to the experts, and those are the experts that we have available to us.
And you guys are gonna be hiring them, is that correct?
It'll be a contract. That is correct. We will have a contract with them to assist us with the design and construction of the facility, and then a separate contract to operate and manage the facility. So there'll actually be two contracts in place.
And one thing, this, this creates jobs. Now, a lot of times, when you say film industry, you're talking about, you think that Mike Jones is gonna be a new actor. But I mean, the support staff, I mean, they have to have carpenters, electricians, plumbers. They have to build sets. I mean, this, this goes along with where we need jobs and new jobs here in the county. I mean, a film coming into town actually generates jobs that our citizens can go get hired and work, you know, in trade they already know.
It does generate a significant amount of jobs. The other thing that's very significant, I think equally as significant, is the amount of sales tax that something like this will generate. When they come in to film a movie, they may bring anywhere from 100 to, 200 to 300 folks in with them in order to make that movie. So that generates a huge amount of sales in terms of hotel rooms in our existing facilities in the county. I strongly suspect that you'll see some new hotels come in as well due to this facility, but also places like Home Depot. They build sets for every show and movie that's done. So restaurants, caterers, just about any kind of support service, whether it's a barber or anyone that provides a support service, will see an increase in business due to the facility.
Most of the people that work in the union live above I-20, and there's no film studio located above I-20. So we're encouraged by that too. And, you know, if you look at aviation, health care, and also the movie industry, they are ones that continue to seem to do well even in hard economic times. So we've kind of put our focus in those three areas to hopefully be able to position Pauling County to come out of this recession.
Thank you.
That's the conclusion of a regular business session. I appreciate the interaction from the staff and the commissioners. Great questions. Do I hear, there's no closed session, no citizen wishing to speak. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I wanted to look at just a couple minutes, and I know this is long, but just a few minutes of the board meeting that evening is the next video. And you'll start it at nine minutes and 15 seconds. And I appreciate it. I think you can click down on the word "board meeting," and it'll maybe happen. Nine, nine minutes and 15 seconds. If, if we're at the correct one. There you go. I don't think that's the right video.
Rebecca, I think if you close that video, and then if you look down in the second-to-last file, I think is the one that you want. Yeah, that one.
Nine minutes and, yeah, just stopped at about nine minutes and five or 10 seconds. There you go.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Five oh. Number eight, action to adopt Resolution 11-07, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Pauling County, Georgia, to approve the bond resolution of the Pauling County Industrial Building Authority authorizing the issuance of the Pauling County Industrial Building Authority Revenue Bonds, Pauling County Economic Development Projects, Series 2011A, in the principal amount not to exceed 1,200,000. And the Pauling County Industrial Building Authority taxable revenue bonds, Pauling County Economic Development Projects, Series 2011B, in the principal amount not to exceed 7,200,000, to authorize the execution of the contract between the county and the authority to authorize the chairman and other officers and officials of the county to take such further actions as are necessary to provide the issuance and delivery of the revenue bonds described herein and for other purposes. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
I'd like to see us table this for two weeks till the next meeting.
Well, there's some, I'd like to have some more discussion on this. But there is some things pending in California regarding Roadtown, who we have a contract with. Today, Mike, I think something came up about- Mike, I think something came up about dedicating a mill towards this debt. Do you have maybe a slight clarification of that?
Yes, sir. The bond covenants that the bond council, Jim Woodward spoke about earlier, he said that you could impose up to one mill to service the debt on these bonds. Talk a second about what that means. One mill in your budget is about 30, about $3.5 million a year. That's what one mill would equal. The debt service on these bonds are nowhere near that. So the debt service on a 30-year note would be about $620,000 a year. On a 20-year note, it'd be about $700,000 a year. You'll make that determination after we hold the bond hearing when the bonds are sold. Assuming that none of the contracts come through on the hangar, and there is no income from those hangars, assuming that the industrial facility that we're wanting to build, whose first tenant will be the film studios, goes completely belly up, and the IBA has no ability to pay those bonds back, then they come to the Board of Commissioners, and you have to impose enough millage to cover that debt service. We're talking about .18 mills on a 30-year note. You're talking about .2 on a 20-year note. That's the max. Now, that's today's value of a mill. As the economy gets better, the value of a mill goes up, these numbers come down. There's about two years' worth of debt service that's built into these bonds. So the scenario we're talking about, if it did fall apart, is two years into the future. We're not talking about imposing a mill. The goal is to never impose any sort of millage rate increase to service its debt. These are revenue bonds, and the goal is to, is to put the contracts in place to cover that debt service. But I think it is important to clarify that, because I heard that, too. And if I'd have been a citizen listening to that, I'd have been confused over that.
At this point, we've got a motion and a second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the resolution.
I guess one of the issues that I have is, for one thing, the 7,200,000 was not on the agenda Friday, and that was pointed out in this morning's meeting. And obviously, I'm hearing from y'all, time is of the essence, but...
I think it was, it was the, the bond resolution was on there, because it is two separate things, 2011A and 2011B, but it didn't specify the amount, what was posted Friday, because that was the correction you made this morning on what we had.
It is in the bond backup, it's very clear in there, but 2011A was specified, 2011B was not, even though both series were included on the wording. But that's why we made the clarification this morning during the work session when it was discussed.
Well, 2011B naturally didn't have the price of the bond, but it was 7,200,000.
Correct.
And so, anybody that would have looked at it when that was brought out on Friday, they just saw the 1,200,000.
Right, which was the purpose of the clarification during the work session, certainly.
There's a motion and a second. I'll call the question. All in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
That's, do you hear three?
I'm not, I'm not in favor.
Against?
I'm not going to do it.
Not going to do what?
No. Why would happen if we paid off two weeks? What would it do to us with Road Town?
We've had a vote, let's move on. We have a vote, and it's second, and it's a three, two vote. And yours was against. Items from the 2:00 planning commission, we have an application, 2011-05-Z, application by MMCC.
People may feel like that I kind of took up 31 minutes of your time, but I think you needed to see what it, that we did and what we voted on. The issue that I have today is we have been paying the bond payments. One of the things that came up is there was a company out of Tennessee that was going to come in there and take the corporate hangar. Nobody's taken the corporate hangar. And they have, for the most part, they've been failed projects. I'm, I'm not yelling at anybody about it, I'm just stating a fact. They've been failed projects, a 1.2 and a 7.2 million dollar bond. And it's just another failed project. When you put the failed projects together that have happened, that I have voted against since I've been in office, they come out to, right now, a $1,640,000 a year that we're paying, that y'all are paying the taxpayers. And when we're looking at last meeting doing a rollback, and we're looking at what we can find, where we can find 1.8, 1.7, 1.9 million dollars to make up that difference because we're doing a rollback, out of our debt service, we're paying a $1,640,000 a year because people that made commitments to the Board of Commissioners haven't kept that commitment. And they decided that they would not pay the bond payments, even when they brought in income. The question has come up several months ago, they had a, IBA had a meeting where they were going to sell the film studio. And I don't know all the ins and outs about it. I've pieced a few things together concerning it, but I have learned this. They were going to sell the film studio, they've put it off for right now. And I won't get into why they did, but it's not right. And they were going to sell the film studio, and they don't want to take that money and pay back the bonds. So I bring this video up today, and I bring this conversation up today, because people need to know, you can't keep coming and asking for something on projects that are, end up being failed. The IBA was given property on Bill Cruth Parkway for an industrial park over there. The contract that was written is not good. The county should have never done what they did and took that property away from the Water Department. They took capacity away from the Sewer Department. They took sewer capacity away. And the Water Department hasn't received any money, and they're probably not going to receive money. I have talked to people about it. I've been in meetings. I don't want you to think that I'm just bringing this up today and letting this go. I've been in meetings several years concerning this, and there's commissioners on this board that know that. And you can't keep going down the hall to have a cup of coffee with somebody, or you can't keep going across town to have a cup of coffee with somebody. You can't keep going wherever to have conversations with somebody, and that somebody, whoever those people are, don't take care of the issue. And then you wonder why we get in a meeting and they got to bring up something that's a little negative. Nobody's fussing here, just telling you the facts. I'll finish up this year, December 31st, serving eight years. At this point today, I've never missed a meeting. I'm tired of seeing authorities not do their job. I'm tired of seeing them come ask for money and not do what they committed to do. And while I'm in office, I'm dealing with it again, because I'm not getting anywhere. And when you go sit down with folks that want to talk to you about, yeah, I know we should pay it back, I know this, I know that, but you know, y'all really got money good at that time, it's a low rate, and we really want to take it and do something else, you need to come and ask the board if that's what the board's willing to do. And you need to come up with some sort of agreement between the Board of Commissioners and the IBA that everybody can live with. But we can't keep funding and backing projects that are failed. It doesn't matter who the Board of Commissioners is, and it doesn't matter who changes on the IBA Board or the Airport Authority Board. The taxpayers should not be funding failed projects. They can't keep doing that. And you can't go and sell an asset that was backed by bonds and not pay it back. And then when you finally do sit down to have a meeting, you're looking for ways through paperwork that you can find out, different ways that you don't have to go and pay it back. And that's not right. And that's what you're not going to hear in an IBA meeting or an Airport Authority meeting. People have made fun of me through the years for saying, do the right thing. And to me, it's pretty simple. All you have to do is do the right thing. And it don't take a rocket scientist to figure out that if there's bonds that were borrowed, that taxpayers are backing, and now taxpayers have been paying for it, just like I figured they would be. And you sell those, those assets, which, to be honest, one of them's already been sold, that money should come back to be put in the bank to sit there so that when it's time to pay those bonds back, they can be paid back. And if the Board of Commissioners today, or the Board of Commissioners in January, want to allow them to keep that money, then you need to do it right up here in the public. Don't be making backroom deals. Don't do it. They're not keeping their commitment. And I want you to know one more time. I have went to them, I've sat down and talked to them, and they tell me how they know they're supposed to pay it. And then when we sit, and we come up with a time to have a meeting to discuss it more, all we want to do is work on, hey, what can we work on to find out what we can do to weasel out of it? And that's not right. The five members that are sitting up here are responsible to the taxpayers. That's the job that we have. So I appreciate the time, I appreciate y'all allowing me to show that. We just need to do what's right. And they need to do what's right. And quit not having meetings, and start talking about it, and let the public know what's going on. Quit holding off on the meetings. Quit deciding you're not going to sign papers till later. Do what's right for the taxpayers of this county. Thank you.
That's the conclusion of our regular business. Executive session is required for personnel and land acquisition. So at this time, I would, well, let's see, we don't have any public participation on non-agenda items. So at this time, I would entertain a motion that we go into executive session for personnel and land acquisition. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Commissioner Davis is our second.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Crowe. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. We stand adjourned into executive session.